Good morning, everybody. It is nine AM. Can y'all hear me okay out there? Okay, it's nine AM on this Tuesday, November 12th. I called to order of 2024. I've been told I need to make sure I put the year in there. Called to order a regularly scheduled meeting of the Burnet County Commissioners' Court here at the second floor courtroom at the historic courthouse on the square. And as we do so, I'd ask Commissioner Wall if he would lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for letting us be here today and thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us each and every day. Especially today, be with us as the court discusses and makes decisions that is so important to Burnet County, Lord. Be with all the many different people too that's out there that's working for us in Burnet County and across the world, our military, our police, Sheriff's Office, etc., EMS too, Lord. Be with us all as we go down our last path. I pray that you'll give us rain, even though we had a little bit, we sure pray for more, Lord. Be with us all each and every day, and we pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Okay, I have all members of court present. And that would bring us to public comment, so any member of the public can make a comment for three minutes. And please introduce yourself and... Go ahead.
Good morning, Claire Nypro, Burnet County taxpayer voter and interested person. Regarding the Baker Tilly investigation, I will read into the record a statement written by Shirley Bilar, which she entitled "Short and Sweet." This document was an attachment to a chain of emails between Ms. Bilar, Judge Oakley, and County Attorney Arredondo discussing the consequences of falsifying a government document. Mr. Arredondo indicates in one email that, quote, "There are different versions of the offense," unquote, and, quote, "The one I believe best fits is the felony version," unquote. Baker Tilly was engaged to investigate an alleged charge of falsifying timesheet records of some employees within the sheriff's department. This is the short and sweet document. The false entries were entered by supervisors, not the employee who received extra compensation for the added time entered but not worked. The employee and the supervisor must sign the timesheets which include the statement as follows. Burnet County timesheets are governmental documents and as such require accurate and truthful information and are subject to Texas Penal Code 37.10. Falsifying a timesheet, a government record, is a Class A misdemeanor. I certify that this is a correct and a complete record of the hours worked this pay period. Adding time for work that was not authorized as FTO and/or CTO was not funded within the scope of annual budgeting and was falsely entered into the employee's timesheet as time worked by a supervisor was not legal. The initial complaint came from an employee. The sheriff's office was informed of the issues. Multiple employees' records created to fund an unauthorized and unfunded program. Upper management gave assurance the activity would cease. That was also a false statement. The timesheets continued to include additional time. The county attorney passed on investigating the complaint, thereby sending the complaint on to the district attorney. The district attorney made one inquiry to the sheriff and was told the activity was not happening. An employee in the district attorney's office did an independent investigation and stated that, yes, indeed, there was sufficient documentation to open a formal investigation. The district told his employee to, quote, "stand down," unquote. This is a short, concise overview of the situation we presented to Baker Tilly. All we need is a report that confirms the occurrences of falsifying timesheets for the purpose of funding unauthorized and unfunded work. We will then have confirmation that the charge is true and correct and does indeed require a full investigation by the district attorney's office. Thank you.
Patty Coe, Burnet County voter and taxpayer. Am I too short? Like that? Okay.
Testing.
Really close, okay. No problem, thank you. Topic of my comments is the Baker Tilly audit. It was approved to... It was presented to Commissioners' Court on the record to... The judge gave the court notice of payroll irregularities. And he directed... He wanted to employ a forensics accounting firm to inspect Burnet County payroll records. So on October 16th of 2023, there's an email from Judge James Oakley to Katie at Baker Tilly that says, "There was a constable who used to work at the sheriff's office who was aware of the fraudulent practices." My question is, if you're in law enforcement and you're aware of some fraud that's ongoing at your place of employment, are you supposed to bring that forward? This says that it was sometime in 2019, so I do have some questions about that. The DA did interview a former dispatch employee, and Judge Oakley acknowledged that to Baker Tilly on January 29th, 2024. Can I reclaim my time? Is there something else we need to be working on right now? I'm sorry, am I interrupting?
551 says you have three minutes to speak for your public comment.
Uh huh.
That's your opportunity.
But there's no... There's no... No, you don't... You can do other business. There's other businesses more important than people who've actually come here to talk to Commissioners' Court during this three minutes?
You've got three minutes for public comment, please.
Okay. So we have a lot of mentions in here of Commissioner Luther's wife, who at the time was a private citizen. And you have citizens, taxpayers, and interested persons who've been asking for months for information related to the Baker Tilly audit. We were denied information. And if you look at the penal code, we have a problem here, I believe, with intentionally being denied rights and privileges that were allowed constitutionally under the Open Meetings and Public Information Act. Also, on February 23rd of 2024, Judge James Oakley sent an email to Katie at Baker Tilly and said, "Katie, I have decided to limit your inquiry to only the sheriff." Did you...
Thank you.
Did you all vote for that?
Thank you.
For him to choose to just investigate the sheriff? Is that what this was all about?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning. It's Mike. Last name is K-A-M-M-L-E-H. I just want to make everybody aware that on November 2nd, Beverly Ranch had another event, and that event caused traffic to be blocked again on 2341 and County Road 114. Restricted travel from to and from our little 2,000-voter residence. It was dark and the line of cars, the long line of cars, made it very hazardous with their bright lights for anybody to go southbound on 2341 or travel on 114. It got so bad that the people were just leaving their vehicles on the side of the road to go wherever they were going. But they were U-turning in the road. This made it a very hazardous situation. So whenever they come up for the permitting again for any future events, I'd like for y'all to keep this in mind because I'm sure they have an explanation for this again, but eventually somebody's going to get killed on that road, so please keep that in mind.
Thank you, sir.
As a voter and a taxpayer in Burnet County, I will say that, and since all of you work for us, the taxpayers and voters of Burnet County, I would say that all of you receive a failing grade. That's an F on your report cards for the work that you've done for this last year. You certainly don't deserve a pay raise that you've given yourself. And I'm glad to see that all of you are looking at me, except for Mr. Oakley, who, you know, Mr. Oakley never has the courage to actually look anybody in the face. Oh, well, there you go. But like I said, you deserve a pay cut rather than a pay raise. And for the frivolous spending of, what was it, $21,200 in taxpayer money for this hoax Baker Tilly investigation audit that wasn't anything but a report, a stack of very important paper, maybe you should all pull out your checkbooks and write the taxpayers a check for $4,240.40. Forty-two forty, I believe, is the total for each of you, and put it back into the public treasury for the frivolous waste of taxpayers' money. That's all. Thank you.
All right, any other members of the public? Hearing none?
Judge, if you could, I'd like to give a report. If I could do my public comment from the chair here.
Oh, absolutely.
This is a summary from our Household Hazardous Waste Program that we did in October. And so I just wanted to share this with folks so that they would know that some good did come out of this event. We gathered 892 tires over the four-hour period. The... We had 381 vehicles that came through. We gathered 14 55-gallon drums of oil and nearly an 18-wheeler full of electronics. We had 264 car batteries and thousands of small alkaline batteries. This, again, we did in conjunction with the Central Texas Groundwater Conservation District, who have been great partners over the years, and we really appreciate their support. We have 76 volunteers that helped us put that on, and that is exactly what makes this event work, is the volunteers. We did this through a grant, a partial grant anyway, through the Capital Area Council of Government of 35,000. The four-hour event ended up costing us $52,813.55. So without our partners, this is not something that we could achieve. I greatly appreciate everyone's both physical and financial support of the event, and we look forward to setting an April event for a vote pate in the near future.
Good stuff. Is there any other public comment? All right. That would take us to Agenda Item 4, which would be a presentation by Michael Sodek Mitchell, Rither, Executive Director of the Central Texas Groundwater Conservation District. Oh, I'm sorry, this is your agenda.
That's fine, I'll read it in.
District update and explanation of new well inspection and tagging program.
Yep, so first off, tagging onto what Commissioner Dockery said, thank you for your support in helping us with the HHWs and the vote pates because without cooperative effort, we wouldn't be able to do it. But I asked Mitchell to be here today. They came up with this new well inspection and tagging program, which is a benefit to well owners to check their well out, see where they're at, and put a tag on it with pertinent information. But when it hit the news media, I think it was not received well by some people. The comments I saw were confused, thinking that it's a new tagging and registration and metering program. So I thought Mitchell should come today and give us an update on this new program.
Sure. Appreciate the invite. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name's Mitchell Sodek, Central Texas Groundwater Conservation District General Manager. As Damon said, we developed a fairly new program to inspect wells and to put a placard on them, a tag, if you will, with pertinent well information. And so we're inspecting the wells much like the county does for septic installation. We're inspecting that the drillers have done what they're supposed to do according to our district rules. And so the process, when any new well is drilled, it's automatically registered prior to drilling, and we issue authorization to the drillers so that they can proceed with drilling the well. After they've drilled the well, they present us a well-drilling report that has all the pertinent information about how deep they went, what kind of water they found, which geologic layers they encountered, how much the well produces, and ultimately how the well was completed, what casing size, where the packers were, where the cement was placed in the well, and so forth. And they present that to us, and then now we are going out and inspecting their work afterwards. So we are making sure that that report is accurate, the well locations, the latitude and longitude are accurate, and that the completion of the well was according to our district rules. And we're finding that some of these wells are not properly completed to our specs. What we can largely see is what's only at the surface. So the well head and the surface completion, those are two of the most important pieces of a well because that protects the groundwater in the well from any potential contamination. And this is also why we're a major sponsor and contributor to the household hazardous waste because if you imagine, there's somebody who drills a well, and they'll put it inside a wellhouse, and then they use that convenience of that wellhouse to store materials. They'll store oil, they'll store fuel, they'll store herbicides, pesticides, fertilizer, batteries, everything, right next to their well. And if the well is not properly sealed, those are sources of contamination directly straight into the aquifer. So this is the major point of contention of the inspection process, is for water quality protection of the groundwater. And so if the well is not properly completed, we make sure that the driller goes back and performs that work as he was supposed to. And for a normal homeowner, a well owner, this is a major investment for them. You know, wells today cost 25 to 50, maybe even $60,000, depending on how deep you have to go. So this is something that people expect to last, you know, the lifetime that they're going to own it or use it. And we want to make sure that the standards are in place, and they are in place, but we want to make sure that the drillers are following the rules on the completions of the well. And so after we've inspected it, and we have our field techs go out there and look at the well, we're placing what we're calling a tag, which is just this placard. This is a stainless steel tag that has pertinent well information, such as the well ID. That's the registration number that the district uses. It has the completed date, when it was drilled, the total depth, the screen intervals, and the depth to water when we measured it that day. It also includes our district name and logo and our phone number and our website on there. And so the idea is that this tag will stay on the well, you know, hopefully 20, maybe 30 years in time. And if that property in that well changes ownership, you know, three, four times it's changed ownership, that person that owns it in the future, they'll at least have a thing to look at to sit, to tell them what, you know, the important information about their well, their well number. They can call the number on here to get the rest of the information that we house in our database. And it's just a great way to conveniently place that on the well because, if you may imagine, many people who buy a home or a well, they don't know anything about it. The paperwork gets lost in the shuffle of things. They don't know what they're acquiring. And so this is a convenient way to know that information. And the press did run a good articles on this, and I think there was some confusion that came out of that, that this would be something more in effect, and we may be metering them. Quite frankly, our metering rules have not changed. They've pretty much been the same since 2009. And so we only meter wells that are a larger capacity. Those are wells that produce with a pump greater than 17.36 gallons per minute. And by and large, that's a very relatively small amount, a few hundred wells out of maybe 9,000 total wells in the district. And so the majority of wells are not metered. The wells that are metered, they're also issued a permit with a specific volume. The meter's intended to verify that they're within those permitted volumes. We actually don't have any fees. We have zero fees at the district. We're 100% abhorrent taxes, so there's no metering fees. There's no application fees. There's no permitting fees. Are there any questions on the metering program or the tagging program? Or the metering, yeah, whichever. So we are doing every new well now. We will, at the request of the homeowner or the well owner, we will go back to existing wells and do this same thing if they so choose. And we will also measure depth to water on any well in the district, and that's a free cost. There's no charge to that, so we will do that, and we'll place a tag on there as well if you'd like.
Yeah, so that was a question on new wells. You're basing what goes on the tag as to what's on the driller's log, correct? Unless there's a request to get to do the depth.
Correct.
And so for existing wells, who knows? There may be some things on file. Depends on how old it is, right? But that's really... I really like that you're doing the inspection to see how far it is, you know, where their water is. And that's a big unknown, right? And nobody else really has the ability, the capacity to do that, so I think that's a great service, if you will. Answer it. That's good stuff.
Yes, sir. And if we visit the well multiple times, we're storing each of those water level measurements. So if you go back over the years and there are multiple measurements, you can see the trends in the water levels as well. We do have a monitoring well program. Not every well would be able to be a part of that program, but we'd gladly talk to anybody about that. We want to space wells in a very specific manner, and it just depends on the makeup of the well. But we'd have those discussions with folks.
On a new well, you'd make the comment that, make sure everything was done right, and if not, then you'll get with the well drillers and make sure that it'll... I'm just wanting to make sure that if a property owner wants to take part of this program, my hope is it's not something that would come back on them if the well driller was negligent, for lack of a better word, of doing everything that they should have, so that the property owner is held harmless.
For the most part, correct. Yes, that's correct. And that's why we're focusing on the new wells, so that we can address it with the driller specifically. Now, there is a scenario where you have a much older well, and if it's an abandoned well... Abandoned wells are a category that are the responsibility of the landowner, and that's a well that's...
Well, yeah, that's a liability, yeah.
So that's a different topic, but by and large, the completion of the well is the driller's responsibility. They're licensed by the state of Texas to complete wells. It's their responsibility to do it according to the rules.
Hey, Mitchell, can you give us some examples of what y'all found that was negligent on the driller's part?
Sure. Yeah, most of the, you know, most of what we can see is only at the land's surface, so it's difficult to see anything below that, but we're seeing a lot of partially completed wells. And in some cases, we're seeing wells that are drilled as test holes, which is just a hole in the ground with no casing, and they're left that way. And the well owner then goes back to their people, and they try to decide what we're going to do with this well, if we're going to complete it properly or not. And a lot of times what happens is they forget about it. They move on, things disappear, and now you have a hole in the ground that is a major liability from a safety perspective and from a quality perspective. Those are the most egregious. But from a regular, you know, household-style well, what we're seeing is non... The cement does not come up to the proper level that it's supposed to. It's often due to a result of a rushed job. If you pour wet cement down the well to try to seal it, it will slough down. It'll settle down, and you're left with, you know, sometimes one to three feet that is not properly cemented. It also then is inside of a steel housing, steel casing that surrounds the plastic casing. And any kind of rainfall that falls in there, if it freezes, it cracks that cement. So the cement's supposed to come up above and slope away to allow rainfall to not settle down in there and run off.
Thank you. Last time I took my well cover off, that little house had four great big red wasps nests. I'm sure y'all have been careful of that, so...
Lots of wasp in there.
And snakes, too. Water's a very important thing. Is there any questions, anybody in the... Yes, sir.
Yeah, the question was whether we have the ability to check inside the well, and the answer is yes. We have both geophysical logging equipment and a camera that we can run inside the well. But the well has to have the pump removed, so if you have a pump installed, it has to be taken out before we can do those surveys. But we do that procedure as well.
But you can still check the water depth without pulling the pump?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you check the well depth without pulling the pump?
Generally, no. Generally, it's very difficult to do that. And we do have, generally, we, from 2001 forward, we have really good well records. If a well is older than 2001, those records sometimes exist, but they're harder to find.
All right, no other questions of the public? Thanks for the update.
Yeah, I appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Very important stuff. All right, I'm just going to go down the agenda if there's no other special requests. Number five would be discussion or action regarding the appointment to the Campo 2025 Technical Advisory Committee on behalf of the city of Marble Falls with Russell Sanders, the primary representative, and Caleb Krenzel. Should be an L at the end of that name, Krenzel, as the alternate. And this is a reappointment from the current appointments. So is there any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Six, discussion or action regarding acceptance of donations for the precinct for Thanksgiving luncheon. Commissioner Dockery.
Judge's list is attached. This is our Thanksgiving luncheon that we're going to be holding on November 22nd, working with municipalities that we typically work with, the law enforcement agencies, everybody, the EMS, fire we work with every day in the field, and this is our opportunity to bring those people together and provide lunch to them and say thank you for their service, and that's all I have to add to that, other than I would move for acceptance.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven, discussion or action regarding the addition of Burnet County resident Ken Rich to the Burnet County Broadband Committee. Mr. Riley.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rich is a resident out at Seven Creeks, and he's very knowledgeable in the world of broadband. So he wanted to get on the committee, and we'll take all the help we can get as we try to navigate to get all the funds we can from the state to the ISPs to get internet, so it's just as simple as that. I move to approve Ken Rich to our committee.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eight, is discussion or action regarding the approval to sign a certificate of capital area housing finance corporation single-family mortgage origination program? This is something we get periodically throughout the year, and it's basically a testing that we aren't engaged in any lawsuits, I believe, with any of the people involved on the project, and we're not. These are all outside of Burnet County, but we're all part of the family, and so would entertain any questions, comments, or motions.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine, discussion or action regarding... Nine, discussion or action regarding the acceptance of a donation check from Sentry Security to the Burnett County Sheriff's Office to be accepted into the Burnett, into the Sheriff's, Burnett County Sheriff's Office donation account. Karen, you have anything more on that? We have, we have the amount?
I, I believe the amount is five thousand. Is that correct? Yes, sir, five thousand.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can y'all hear okay? Is it, it's a new sound system, or new microphones, not new speakers? Ten, discussion or action regarding the adoption of the new Senate Bill eighteen ninety-three IT policy. Can you speak to that, Becky, or is Shirley here? You have to pull that down and really eat it.
Senate Bill eighteen ninety-three mandates that we have a policy in place to enforce what is commonly known as the TikTok ban. Um, HR has done that, but this is an IT policy that allows us to enforce that mandate.
Okay, so this is all about being compliant with state law on, on the IT?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments, or motions?
So, we sat through a demo I did with Constable Benzo and, um, for some new, a product that, that complements this as well as, um...
Right, the demo, the invite was sent to all elected officials that, um, demoed the product that we're hoping to get that will allow us to enforce the, the mandate and the policy, and that'll also get a CEGIS compliance.
So the CEGIS compliance, that seems to be the most important aspect of it. And you've got, you're working on a, a quote from that company for both?
This was an unfunded mandate, and we didn't have anything budgeted for this product, so we're, we're, we're trying to find it within our budget other places.
When will the quote be ready?
We have a quote.
Oh, we already do?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have a question?
It's, um, a twenty thousand dollar initial fee with fifteen thousand of that being recurring.
And an unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
I get it.
And that's for CEGIS compliance. It's two products. It's a remote product so that we can remote it and troubleshoot our clients, our employees. And then the other side of that is the endpoint management that allows us to prohibit the downloading of applications and to remove applications that shouldn't have been downloaded. So it's a two-part product.
So part of it protects our systems and servers from people being able to access bad things, and the other part...
It, it allows us to remove, wipe devices. Like, say, an employee left his grundle and took their laptop. It allows us to disable that device.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the CEGIS side of things, uh, we have to have that part of it, 'cause what we have now only has a temporary approval on it. We have to get new stuff, and that's what this'll do?
Yeah, so that was the other part of that demo is the remote aspect. Um, the product we use currently isn't CEGIS compliant, and so we've kind of been given grace by the CEGIS auditor with the understanding that we're looking for a product that will get us CEGIS compliant.
Do we have a deadline on that?
Um, immediately. It's...
So should that be on the next court and start looking for money?
Yes, I, I believe we're still looking for quotes from some different vendors.
Yeah, we're trying to find some of the quotes.
This is the only one that we have found that has a FITS compliant remote component. So we could find other endpoint management products, but this remote product, um, i- is pretty much it.
This does both.
But that's, that's not a requirement of the legislation.
Of the Senate bill and the mandate? No, but for CEGIS compliance, that is.
Our first goal is to make sure we're compliant with the legislation.
Correct.
But there's an opportunity to enhance that, but if that costs to enhance it, you know, we've gotta really look at that, because...
And we're looking. We, we demoed a product yesterday that'll save us about seven thousand on our antivirus, and so we're, we're hopeful that we can find it and, and make it work.
So this is just an example of a little unexpected hit. And through the budget process, there were some deals made at the end that spent down the unallocated fund that was set up, basically the contingency for the year. So that's already, you know, here we are, just in the second month of the budget cycle, and, you know, there's already some, some needs that, that if we did this, that would pretty much wipe out the unallocated. So we just need to see what products are out there. Chief, did you have something to add to this?
You mentioned a date, or you said immediately. Is there a actual date that it's, uh, that we're, uh, that we can go through?
Well, our product is currently not CEGIS compliant. Our Roga support product...
What's the November date that...
November twentieth was for our policy to be in place for this initial.
But it was already in place?
Through HR.
Right.
The IT policy wasn't, but that IT policy just adds verbiage that allows us to enforce it.
And, and the part of, uh, that this is new, this was passed at the last legislation two years ago. So that, it's, it's not new. It's, it's two years old. Whether we're just finding out about it now, uh, doesn't make it new. So on a, on a date for CEGIS compliant, if November the twentieth is, uh, the CEGIS compliant date, what's the plan on moving forward?
I will say, we, we demoed a product yesterday that will get us seven thousand closer. We removed Rainbow Support. That was four or five thousand. So we're, we're close. And then if we replace what we use now for remote support, there's two and a half thousand. We're just a few away, but, I mean, it has to come from somewhere, so...
Prime example, legislation gets up there, makes a law, but they don't fund it. Then we go to try and be compliant with the law, and guess what? There's not many vendors out there that do this. It's, 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 it's...
Like, like Taser. You got one, one company that does, that provides our...
But in this case, the state should provide funding for it. They say you shall do this, and they need to pay for it, because they're more worried about putting a limit on what we can raise, and we get hit with all these unexpected costs.
Is there a piece of this that we're waiting on the grant for?
No, the grant is totally separate. That would be nice, but... Any minute. I keep, I say that every day, but, um, people got their denial letters since September. We haven't received one, so we're being told that's good news, that we're probably gonna be awarded. We just don't know if it's gonna be a complete award or when it's gonna happen, so...
Is this something we need to be up to bid for?
Doesn't sound like it on the price. They go out for bid.
It's not above fifty, but that precludes us from going out to bid, but... We're just searching different vendors through DIR to see who could...
We've done about five demos, and as far as having one product to check all the boxes, this is the only one. And as far as CEGIS compliance, this is the only one. I, I feel like we're really close to making it work, or at least being close enough to figure out how to make it work. We're, if we replace some things that we're using with more economical options, I think we can get there.
Um, Jackie and I have been working on this to fi, to find the financing as well as look at different companies, and I feel confident then within, um, at, at least, ho- hopefully by the next agenda, we can bring something before the commissioner's court.
I, I think we'll be able to. I think the demo we did yesterday and the amount that saves us annually with what we're saving on Rainbow and the other remote product, we're pretty much there.
Is there a timeframe as far as, once it gets approved, on how, how long it takes to implement?
They know that we're needing it urgently.
What is it, like, three months, six months, one month?
I think it's weeks.
Weeks?
So we can put this on the next agenda?
We can, and technically, if we find, if we find a vendor that we could beat the twentieth, you know, we have a special meeting if we're that worried about that. I doubt we're the only entity that is trying to scramble to be compliant with this based on the limited number of vendors that are available to be compliant with the law.
The thing that's put us over a barrel is replacing our antivirus with a new product. Um, that needs to happen quickly.
And that's happening today, right?
Well, we demoed them yesterday. That's something that we just need to, we need to discuss with Karen if we're close enough to be able to replace Exidium with Sophos and Beyond Trust.
And it's...
And when we expire from that product?
Yes.
But the new product is cheaper than what we're paying for now, right? So that was budgeted for?
Well...
'Cause it's a replacement?
We budgeted seven and a half for Exidium. It costs twelve and a half, and so we were already a little under there, but this new product being fifteen a year creates more of a gap.
I have a question. Isn't there a million dollars or something in budget for a server? No? Might not seen that right, didn't read that right. Okay, there's no need to replace...
We have a backup server, um, but there's not anything budgeted, and especially not a million. I don't, I don't know where that...
And our cloud storage went through the roof.
Mm-hmm.
Unexpected jump there.
That's another product we're looking to...
Do you have a question to explain what CEGIS is?
It's Criminal Justice Information Service. Um, it's basically how we are allowed to access Tlets and get information from the FBI and do background checks, and, um, law enforcement and the jail have to have that.
And CEGIS compliance is like number one for grant funding, right?
It's, it's number one for a lot of things. I mean, like, our jail would be shut down if we weren't CEGIS compliant, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so...
We still have to adopt the policy, sorry. I think we got sidetracked.
Yeah, no, so we still need to take action on...
The IT policy. So the IT policy just allows us to, to enforce the state mandate.
Yeah, not a cost. So is there a motion on that?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on item ten. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, while you're at the helm here, the number eleven, discussion or action regarding Tyler Technologies, Burnett County, Texas, Tech, Justice Access Cost Proposal.
So that's our justice access. It's gonna replace our attorney portal that will go away at the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, so that's something that we have to have.
So this is the, the, this is the portal where applicants can go online and apply, correct?
No, this is how attorneys access documents.
We have that one also.
We do, yes, that one's on there also, yes.
Okay, and this is replacing the product that Tyler had. They're replacing it with a new program they've got, and my guess is it's got a price increase.
It does. Surprisingly, it was only five thousand dollars, and I say that because of Tyler, that's unheard of. We, we were shocked. And, um, my understanding is we have enough money in our Tyler budget to cover this five thousand dollar cost.
We're good to go on that, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item eleven. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Twelve, discussion or action regarding Sequel Data Systems Incorporated Cost Approval Proposal for Improving, uh, the Active Directory Domain.
So this is something else that we have a, a budget for. Um, this is a scope of work that's new. It's, Burnett County doesn't employ, um, network architects or engineers, and so sometimes we have to outsource that. And Sequel's a company that we've been using for a little over a year now. Um, they've been great.
So this is the initiative that will make our silos separate?
Yes, this is to secure our Active Directory and create sub-accounts so that everybody's able to access their own files and documents and not anyone else's.
And the cost for this?
Upwards, it's a little over seventeen thousand. I don't remember exactly.
Seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
And we budgeted for it?
And we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars in professional services to pay out to Sequel. Um, that money also, um, if, if we do not get the grant, that, that is gonna be a source of funding to help us with the switches.
Which we should hear any day now on those switches, right?
Any minute.
Any minute now?
I'm gonna say it again.
Over two hundred thousand dollars in grant money, and things are looking good, but we're not counting chickens.
I, I keep hearing from the ListServes and from, um, you know, the Tag ITM emails that if you haven't been denied, that's good news. Everybody is just waiting on FEMA and CISA to award the money, and they're on their own schedule and their own time, so it happens when it happens.
So this money would come from the hundred thousand professional services for Sequel, not be confused with other general fund professional services, correct?
That is correct.
All right, any questions?
Move for approval on number twelve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
The only question is, we budgeted a hundred thousand, it's only seventeen. What else do we pay for, for Sequel, out of the hundred?
So we would pay for the...
All the network.
Architecture of the entire infrastructure and network and configuring switches and setting up all of...
Oh, okay.
Once we get the grant funded, switches.
This is the same company?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen is discussion of replacing the resolution originally signed on nine twenty-four twenty-four authorizing FY twenty-five county grant to Williamson Burnett County Opportunities for ten thousand dollars in conjunction with the Texas Department of Agriculture, Tex- Texans Feeding Texas to provide home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and or have a disability and certifying that the county has approved their accounting system for fiscal grant. I don't know the history of this agenda item, but what do we...
Um, we normally donate ten thousand dollars to Williamson Burnett Opportunities, and, uh, that helps with Meals on Wheels. Um, they use our ten thousand dollars as a match to go after state funding, and so the state funding is requiring, um, a, a specific word, wording in the resolution.
So the way it's worded, it says we're gonna re, first it's not set as a action item, it's just discussion. And then it says replacing a resolution that was originally signed with the, I'm trying to see where it says switching it from that to something else.
If you'd like to table it, we can bring it back. Um, the original resolution did not meet the requirements for the grant match, and so we had to change the verbiage on the resolution to their recommended format.
Are we under a timeline on this?
Um, no, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so we'll plan on, we'll plan on tabling this, so one, we make it as an, an action item, so we can take action. But also, um, make sure we're clear on everything. And you got a question?
I was just gonna ask what reason was for the replacement, and she just said it, so I get it.
All right, so no action on item thirteen. Fourteen, discussion or action regarding a donation deed from Douglas Ivy for four point nine oh one acres of land situated in the RH Tolliver Survey, number eight fifty-four, abstract nine twenty. And I'll just say, and the others listed, instead of reading through it all.
This is a donation deed from Douglas Ivy for right-of-way acquisition on County Road one oh three. Thank you to Mr. Ivy. That's it. Help on one of the corners, corner up there, we had a zero ninety-three.
It's up by one oh eight, right? Uh, no, no, one oh three, and we're one oh three. I thought it was the intersection of one oh eight. No. That was all, that'd be so scary and ghost in the room. Okay. Yeah, we've been instructed not to touch the front buttons.
Don't touch them. So anyway, I would move for approval of the, uh, donation deed from Douglas Ivy.
All right. And just to clarify real quick, Judge Commissioner, Mr. Ivy owns both sides of the road, and what he's done is donated a fifty-foot right-of-way money account through his property. All right, now we have a question.
Can, could Mr. Darling please speak into the microphone? Nobody's gonna be able to hear what he says. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so yay, someone's donating, but right-of-way is the bottom line here.
That's it.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen, discussion or action concerning a donation deed from Ned Ross and Tammy Ross for one point one seven acres of land out of the, a survey that I can't pronounce, uh, for right-of-way along County Road four fourteen.
Same situation, Judge. This is, uh, someone who is donating right-of-way where we have a prescriptive easement. We're gonna perfect that by having fee simple title to the property. It is a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item fifteen. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sixteen, discussion or action concerning the acceptance of a maintenance bond, number four four six seven eight eight two M N T from Austin Engineering Company in the amount of not, two hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars for road and drainage work completed on County Road four oh seven.
Yes, sir. Judge, this is, um, a developer that came in, and there was a drainage easement on County Road four oh seven, and they asked us... and they asked us to improve it. We did not have the funding to do so, so they did it at their own expense. And this maintenance bond will then cover the, the project for the next two years while it's.
Yeah, what was the estimated cost of that project? I'm curious.
I believe it was close to eight hundred thousand.
It's a major improvement down there.
Was it?
Like it was a million, too.
Million, too, okay.
Yeah, major improvement that was done with no county expense. So, that's awesome. Um, is there any questions coming?
I've moved for acceptance of the bond.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Seventeen, discussion or act concerning the replat of Lot Four S L M Ranch subdivision to be known as lots four A, four B, four C, and four D. Um, so it's basically, uh, one lot into four. Um, Commissioner Luther.
Judge Commissioners, it sounds a little bad, but the lots all exceed ten acres. Three of them exceed ten. The, the fourth lot is thirty-five acres. This is a sixty-five acre tract that was planted originally with the intent of going back and doing this.
Is, that's not on the county road?
It's not. It's a private gated road that, that is already through its maintenance phase. It was approved several years ago, the maintenance bond.
But it's a subdivision road.
It's a subdivision.
It's not an easement.
Not an easement, no, sir. Okay?
Yeah, and we've looked at it, and it, it's good, I'm good.
Okay, it looks like we got a question.
Uh, yes, uh, the, uh, this is published in the paper?
Yes.
And where would I find the publisher's affidavit? Okay, is it supposed to be attached to the minutes? It was in pre.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, it has been in previous years. That's why I keep asking, where's the publisher's affidavit? So as long as we've got it, thank you.
Move for approval? Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Eighteen, discussion or act concerning a replat of lots two and three within Spice Wood Ridge to be known as lots two A. So this is a combination of two lots into one. Commissioner Dockery.
Yes, sir, this is a lowering of density. And, um, do not believe this subdivision has a property owner association, I know. Well, I would move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Nineteen, discussion or act concerning the release of the maintenance portion of cash bond, number CB six twenty-two twenty-one in the amount of eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars for Reed Ranch Estates.
And this is the Reed Ranch, and they have completed the repairs they needed on that road, and everything looks good. We've inspected it, so this is releasing the bond.
This is out there, sort of around the winery, kind of.
Nine West, by the winery.
Yeah, right across from the old painted rock, but you probably painted it nice, too.
Statute of limitations.
Move for approval? Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right. Next up would be discussion or act concerning the final plat of the ranch on LBJ Phase Three, a private subdivision consisting of twenty lots on thirteen point three six acres located off of County Road one thirty-four.
Um, roads built, bonds in place, the infrastructure is there. This does have, uh, WC and ID that provides water and sewer service to it. Uh, it was quite an extensive project. There was a lot of dredging done. Uh, all the permits through LCRA and Corps of Engineers were done. Uh, the roads are built. Commissioner Luther and I have driven them. We've got all the testing, all the data required, and it's my recommendation the court approve the final.
Move for approval?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in seconds. Are there any questions, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
I have a public comment on item twenty-one.
All right. Item twenty-one would be acknowledgment of receipt. We've got the acceptance of reports of county officials as required by local government code. Uh, and we have a TCQ notice of an air quality permit. We have a TCQ notice of proposed amendment without renewal of general permitting authorizing discharge of stormwater associated with industrial services activities. D, we have the MIS summary, which is the trappers report. E is the Marble Falls Area EMS update. F is the monthly, uh, septic and building report. And G is eleven point oh four meals correction on an employee handbook. Um, can, before you, what, what is that, eleven, what is G?
Um, I believe in, uh, when we increased the meal rate, I believe we increased it to sixty-one dollars per day from fifty.
It's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, we increased the per diem rate based on the GSA schedule, and I believe we increased from fifty to sixty-one dollars? Or sixty-three dollars? Um, there, it was still said fifty dollars in one place on the, um, policy. So it's just a typographical error.
All right, um, and you have a comment?
I have a public comment right now. Um, what is Local Government Code one one five dot oh two? And who's responsible for the, this agenda item? Because I don't find, uh, I'm on statutes dot capitol dot Texas dot G O V, and I've looked up Local Government Code one one five dot oh two, and it doesn't exist. I see zero zero one, and then it goes up to, um, subchapter B is one one five dot oh two one.
I, I believe they left off the last number on the agenda. I think it's one one five point oh two, and, and I'm doing this from memory. Oh two one or oh two two?
Okay, so oh two one is Audit and Settlement of Accounts under authority of Commissioners Court? Is that the one?
I would have to pull it up.
We'll have to get the county attorney to look into that. And if there's an error in the publication, of the, we'll need to make sure that's right, if there's a, a digit left off.
Okay.
Eddie, you good with that?
Okay, and then reports of county officials. What is the purpose of the reports of county officials? I believe it's to report to the public what they're doing. And so these, is this list A through G the only county official reports that are included under Agenda Item twenty-one? Okay, I've been to public comments, so you go ahead. I'll wait until you open your agenda item, and then I'll ask.
I've already opened it, so I just, I don't understand your question.
My question is, what county officials are reporting under Agenda Item twenty-one A?
That's controlled by statute for each elected official, not set by this court.
Okay, does the statute say that the court keeps it secret from the public during a public meeting where the information is being approved? Or does the statute say that the county officials report to the public at Commissioners Court, and Commissioners Court accepts the reports?
My understanding is, is that it's required that they turn it into Commissioners Court, and then there is therefore, in the minutes of the court meeting, so that the reports are there.
So this is one of those.
It's my understanding. I'd need the county attorney to weigh in on that.
We pass it, but then we can see it? I don't think that's the way public open meetings works. We're supposed to see it first? Okay, they're approving it. So have we seen this in, is this a ta, are all of the county officials?
We're not required to review it, ma'am. We're only required to receive it.
Right, and where did, where does the public get to see them before you receive them?
Subsequent of this meeting.
So that's what I'm saying. So you're accepting something that we haven't seen as members of the public?
That's right.
Okay, so on the organization chart, we're at the top. Taxpayers are at the top. And I believe that the statutes for county officials and the Open Meetings and Public Information Act uh, require disclosure of what's being accepted at Commissioners Court. So that is my comment.
Uh, I guess my question, too, on that, today, what reports are we accepting?
Um, we are receiving, we're accepting reports from the county extensions office, county attorney, county clerk, district clerk, environmental services, JP one, two, three, and four, historical commission, the sheriff, and the tax assessor.
And are these financial reports, or just like what's going on report?
They are financial reports.
Gotcha.
Their responsibility to turn them in. So it's not, we don't police that. It's their responsibility to be compliant.
So it's her responsibility to make sure they do it? And we're just saying that?
We know she got them? That we, we got it. We're saying we're recognizing that we got it, but it's not a vote.
My, my responsibility is to audit them.
So as a member of the public, I believe that we should be able to see those reports? These are our elected officials? I don't know why they're not appended to the agenda so that we can see them before the meeting commences. We don't, we shouldn't have to wait until afterwards. Are they, are these even ever appended to the minutes? Because I don't believe I've ever seen them.
What, what we aspire to do.
Are they miss, uh, Miss Stafford? Are they ever appended to the minutes?
They have never been added to the minutes because they have sensitive data. Um, my documents and Casey Walker District Clerks include account numbers for miners who are in our registries. Um, we compile reports every month. We turn them into the auditor. The auditor audits them, and if they find anything, then we have to go back and fix it. Um, the minutes have never included them because of the sensitive data. We are working with the auditor's office right now, um, to try to give them what, so there's two different laws. One law says I have to give them this information, and then another law says they have to provide it as an acknowledgement to the court. They aren't exactly the same. So I have not gotten to the point where I'm comfortable giving them the report that they need that makes it public because I have to be compliant with what I have to give them. So I need to make sure that I'm compliant with what's going to go in the minutes without being in compliant in my office.
Is there any reason why the sensitive information can't be redacted before it's made public?
It, we, we think it can be. That's where I have to make sure that what I am giving them is compliant, and it's not being edited.
That would be the optimum way to handle this issue because it's come up before in the past. And unless this is fixed so the public can see, we deserve to know what these official reports from our elected officials are with the sensitive information redacted.
And so the last court, when this was added to acknowledgement of receipts, um, there was comment that it would be added that day. I didn't receive, we don't receive them every single court, but it is on the agenda as if I do. So if you go to my minutes under A of last time, I put no reports received, even though they acknowledged them.
Correct.
So I just wanted that to be clear, that if I don't receive them, I'm going to put that there's none. And until we get them clear, uh, redaction-wise, they won't be included.
Well, I think this obviously needs some work from the Commissioners Court. Thank you. I mean, I understand the redaction and the sensitive information, but this has been going on. These reports have been produced for decades. They've been in the minutes in previous years. So I think this is very improper. I really do. I think we've got a big problem here.
Well, I'm going to leave it to the county attorney and auditor to make sure that we're compliant with state laws. State laws may not reflect what people desire, but our job is to make sure state laws are respected, so. Okay, so twenty-one is not a, um, an action item. Twenty-two is discussion or action regarding contracts, agreements, or grants to be approved and or ratified. We have A revisions ma-
Can we go back to twenty-one? I'm sorry.
We'll go back to twenty-one.
I apologize. Just TCQ, um, I couldn't open the air quality permit one. Do we have that?
I couldn't either.
Yeah.
Is it, I think I know what it is, but I just, TCQ is a hot topic.
Well, it's all that smoke coming up from your road and bridge precinct. I don't know what you're burning over there, radials or fireflyers.
Okay, yeah.
And if people want to know, this is a, called Best Friend LLC. It's on nine sixty-three, and it is a pet, um, crematory. Yeah, sorry, thanks. I thought I saw it, but, oh, okay.
Yeah, because they didn't come in a form where I could download them. They're just coming through the mail. I had some issues with, is there a machine scanning in my paper? So that's why these certain documents weren't attached this time, but.
Okay, I'll do it. I just figured that would come up.
Okay, so we're back to twenty-two. Uh, discussion or act regarding contracts, agreements, or grants. Um, A would be a revision made to the onsite dental contract with Austin Dental Care for Burnet County Jail facility inmates. B would be approval to accept the replacement of the new hire application software with Applicant Pro. That's what I was referring to earlier. Did you need to speak to that? No. C would be approval of the FY twenty-five interlocal agreement and adoption of the order with the city of Metal Lakes. D would be approval, uh, to accept the Burnet County Courthouse metal detectors and panic button project for the FY twenty-five criminal justice grant program from the Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office, and Criminal Justice Division. E would be approval to accept the FY twenty-four auditor engagement letter with Patil Brown and Hill. F would be approval and signature of the architectural services contract with Burns Architecture for the jail attorney rooms, which is the modification of the old cafeteria at the current jail. Um, G would be approval to accept the Axon Enterprise quote for TASER ten is the, is the model, but seventeen tasers, the way it's listed on the agenda is, is misleading. It's TASER ten is the model, seventeen total TASER units, is that correct, Chief? Uh, for the sheriff's office. Um, H would be approval of the Burnet County event sponsorship application for, uh, Christmas on the square, and that's at the fifteen hundred dollar level. I would be approval of the Burnet County event sponsorship application for the Bertram Country Christmas, and that's at the thousand dollar level. J would be approval and, and approve and sign the application for eligibility forms for the Texas Federal Surplus Property Program. And K would be an interlocal with the city of Burnet, uh, for library services. Um, so that is what's posted on the agenda. Are all of those still valid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any questions or comments on any of the contracts or agreements?
Can you pull H and I out separate?
All right, I've got a request to pull H and I out of, uh, combo motion, I'm guessing, okay?
That's fine.
And, all right, and you have a question?
I do. On twenty-two E, how long have we been using Patil Brown? How many years in a row?
Is there a third, third, fourth year?
Um, I, I think we're going on more like five, and I would recommend that we go out for bid for FY twenty-five. Um, this is currently FY twenty-four, and it's hard at this point to go out for bid, um, last year, but for next year, I would recommend going for bid.
Didn't they rotate their contact? In other words, a person?
Yes, yes, they, they always rotate the auditor that is assigned to Burnet County. It is a professional service, and so it does not require going out for bid or RFP.
So is this just an audit to make sure that the books are, uh, done in accordance with GAAP?
It is our, it is our annual county-wide audit.
Okay, so it's not the kind of audit that we think it is, though taxpayers think it's, somebody's coming in and looking at all the books and making sure that everything's proper, and there's no misspending or misallocation or anything like that. This is a different kind of audit, right?
This is the financial audit of the county. Yes, they are looking at.
It's a limited scope.
They are looking at the finances of the county.
But they're not looking for fraud, and they're not looking for misappropriation. Or rule-breaking other than accounting rules, like, in other words, how you, how you categorize the spending of the county. That's what this looks at.
They're looking at our financial statements and our, our, the finances of the county property. Uh, is there any misstatements in our financials?
So when was the last time?
The numbers we present are accurate, is what they're looking for.
When was the last time the county had the full kind of audit? Wasn't it twenty years ago? Where the auditors came in and they interviewed people, they talked about cars and credit cards and purchase orders and stuff that taxpayers are interested in? And I think it was about twenty years ago, they came back with issues with vehicles, and people wouldn't talk to them and things like that. I think that we need to, can we expand Patil Brown to do more of a full-blown?
They, they do an internal control audit. They do come twice a year. Uh, they come mid-year and spend about a week, um, visiting the different departments and interviewing. They, they are looking at the areas where cash comes in. So they're interviewing the departments and, and they're taking cash across the, or money across the county.
So they're looking at receivables.
And division of duties. They're, they're looking at internal controls and division of duties.
So, as a taxpayer, I'd like to, I'd like to have, uh, I'd like to have a different kind of audit, which we've talked about in court before. People, this whole Baker Tilly thing ties into what we thought we were getting with Patil Brown was more of a forensics of, of the expenses. So, can we have one? Can we get one? We had one twenty years ago. Why don't we have a different-
I'm not sure we had one twenty years ago. I don't remember. What year are you referring to?
Oh, I could, I'll, I'll send you, I'll send you the whole report. It talks about they had issues with vehicles. It was pretty scandalous. I'll send it to you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not-
The other one I had was, um, this, uh, item J. What, uh, what federal surplus property-
Federal.
Have we ever gotten any before? What is it?
That's where you'd have an opportunity to get federal surplus, uh, former military equipment. We don't need any tanks, but we had a truck for a while and, uh-
What do we do with them?
We've acquired, I think all of us have acquired things through TFC over the years. I was able to acquire a service truck at one point. And it was taken out of service for no reason. And, uh, anyway-
Okay. Thank you.
We purchased it and put it in service. Saved the taxpayers a lot of money.
For those that pay taxes. All right, so that is, uh, I've got a request to pull H and I out. Might there be a motion on the remaining aspects of item twenty-two?
So, move.
All right, we have a motion to approve all items within twenty-two except for items H and I. Any further questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, items H and I. Is there any questions, comments, or motions on items H and I?
Move for approval of H and I, out of number twenty-two. Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor of, of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
All right, note for the record a four oh one vote.
And I have filed the, the proper paperwork. And just to state it, the conflict of interest is that I am donating the sound systems for both of these festivals.
Okay. Now, we're compliant with one seventy, what, one seventy?
You think I'd have it memorized, but I don't.
One seventy-one dot oh oh four, if I remember right, or oh four, so. All right, so there's all of the entirety of twenty-two. Twenty-three, um, would be, actually, I'm gonna go back. I'm gonna go back to an awesome receipt, and this is just something I wanna do. I've received communication, but I wouldn't, didn't have it in time to make this agenda. But, um, our, our, our loved JP four, Debbie Benzall, is, uh, is making it official that she's going to, uh, resign and retire on February the seventh. So, I'll have that on the agenda, uh, next month's agenda, or next week's, next meeting's agenda, uh, for how that process, um, will go on the appointment and whatnot. But Debbie, thank you for being here. Sorry I wasn't able to get that on this agenda. You've just done great things for the county. Been thirty, how many years?
For a long time. Years of service. I was one year, one year I was related from the county and working for the City of Baller Falls, but total service, forty-nine years and fifty-five.
How about that? Well, congratulations on your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, twenty-three will be discussion or action concerning calling for bids, bid openings, requests for proposals, qualifications, related openings. A would be negotiation and award with competitive sealed proposal CSP twenty-five dash four oh nine oh, uh, oh one, or dash oh one, Burnet County Annex Expansion. And B would be approval, uh, to go out for advertisement for bids for the auditorium portion, um, of the AgriLife building. We've been holding off on the AgriLife until we actually owned it. Um, we're set to close on that building at four o'clock today. So, hopefully, everything will work well on that. And, um, that, but Megan, you're here to speak to item A. Okay?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Um, so we had the bid opening for the Burnet County Annex Renovation Expansion on October twenty-ninth. We had two proposals, uh, submitted. One with Pool Construction Incorporated doing business as J. Pool. Their submission was one million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents. We had another proposal from IE Two Construction Incorporated. Their submission was one thousand, or one million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars even. So, with that, uh, I recommend to proceed with negotiating and awarding the contract to Pool Construction. And we have already started negotiations and getting those, that price down, cause we didn't have that much budgeted for it. But, yes, sir.
That's right. All right, so, uh, gentlemen, is there any questions, comments on, I think there's only two on that. We didn't bleed over to the next page, did we? Nope.
What did we budget for that?
We earmarked around the architect estimated between about six fifty and eight hundred.
We did budget a million dollars in the ARPA, out of ARPA funds for that project, but I do not think we are gonna have a million dollars remaining in the ARPA funds.
But anything over what we, what we use, whatever's ARPA is not available, which is gonna be a pretty good chunk. Um, and there's tax note money available for renovation of an existing building.
Okay? Questions, comments, or motions?
I would, I guess on A, uh, approve the award of the competitive sealed proposal to Pool Construction. Is that the correct name?
Yes. Uh, Pool Construction Incorporated, doing business as J. Pool Group.
Okay.
Which is in the audience today. Mr. Pool is in the audience today if there's any questions.
Okay, that is my motion.
Does your motion also include-
Toward, toward the bid in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven sixty-two forty-one.
Okay, so, but you're not, you're not including item B?
No, I'm just doing the one.
Okay, so just twenty-two A. All right, so there was a motion. Was there a second?
Second.
Second. No, that was the estimate from the architect. We budgeted, we budgeted, we earmarked a million dollars of the ARPA, remaining ARPA funds.
So, the difference comes out where?
Well, there, this will come in below a million.
We're hoping to negotiate that with contractor.
Okay, we have a motion. Second on the table. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on twenty-three A. Now, for consideration is twenty-three B. And this is, again, going out for bid, and we knew going in to purchasing this building that it was gonna need a new roof on that section of the building. And, uh, so that was planned for. So, is there any motions on twenty-three B?
Move to approve to go out for bid.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to put it out to bid. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-four.
Are there public comment on twenty-four?
I'd like to open up the item before you start.
Oh, okay. Sure, then it will be public comment or not?
That's, but I need to open the item first.
It would be a rule-stable question.
Because otherwise-
I don't wanna do public comments on the item. I wanna do public comments before.
I'll run things. Thank you. Twenty-four, the following items are part of the consent agenda and require no deliberation by the Commissioners Court. Any item from this agenda may be considered separately. Within the consent agenda would be consideration approval concerning budget interdepartmental line item transfers, consideration approval concerning budget amendments, C, consideration with authorization of payment of claims previously approved by the county auditor, and D, consideration approval regarding departmental equipment requests and/or property transfers. Now, is there any public comment?
As a voter, taxpayer, and interested person, I am giving you verbal notice that you are oppressing the public's right to have a knowledge of what is in the consent agenda before it is being passed. There's no itemization of what's included. Vague and broad statements of agenda items are, have repeatedly in the courts been deemed improper and illegal. And so, I'd like to know what is in the consent agenda today. So, we're on the agenda item. Or are we in public comments? You changed the rules today, so I'll try to catch up.
Not changing any rules.
Okay, so I don't wanna be in public comments. I wanna be-
Just because you asked a question doesn't mean it's gonna get an answer.
Right, so I would like to be out of public comments and on the agenda item. And I would like to know what's in the consent agenda.
You're on it.
Okay.
And so, it's my understanding that this county attorney signed off on this, on this, uh, agenda being posted. And, you know, I think we're compliant with the law.
Are there taxpayers-
You made a serious allegation when you say we're doing something illegal.
I did. I did. I absolutely, I, I'll talk to a district judge about it. I'd be happy to.
You're not a taxpayer either.
Okay. Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's, let's go through this. You brought it up.
Well, it's just an opinion.
Okay, I'm not a taxpayer?
I just, I can't find you on the tax rolls. Or it was brought to me as that. But that's, that's not part of this agenda item. That's not a part of this agenda item.
Brought to you as me not being on the tax rolls. Oh, excuse me, you opened this up.
Yeah, but I'm gonna close it. So, county attorney, are you-
Mr. Arredondo, really? Really?
This is Emily.
Really? Did you hear this?
Well-
You're inserting your, your-
I did, and it's, but I did.
On the record.
I did.
That's highly improper, Judge. It's highly improper.
Well, that's okay. A lot of that happens.
You should be ashamed of yourself.
Probably. Maybe yourself.
Would you like to know maybe why you don't see me on the tax roll?
Do you have a question? You have a question about item twenty-four?
My husband's a disabled veteran. He served honorably in Vietnam.
And that's good.
And so, but we are on the tax rolls. So, how dare you, sir?
Okay.
Okay, so, I, back to what I'm saying is, I wanna know what's in the consent agenda. How many pages, how many taxpayer dollars are being spent that you're hiding from us and refusing to disclose?
All of that is public, isn't it?
It is.
What's this done? So, can it, can it be attached before?
Yeah, what? There's no reason why it couldn't be.
It's supposed to be attached before.
Yeah, that'd be the simple thing. Well, yours wouldn't even sign before. Maybe those bills, or mine, I'm transferring.
Well, then we probably need to look at our process. I'm guessing. If we get it signed and in time, then this stuff can be scanned in. Is that accurate?
On, on the payment of bills, if, if, if it has to, we are balancing and closing out bills right before Commissioners Court. It will, um, slow down your bill paying process and probably, bills would have to be turned in earlier. It are cut off for paying bills, so it will slow your bill paying process down. And, and I'll tell you, vendors, um, it's very hard. The Commissioners Court only meets twice a month, and there are vendors that won't do business with Burnet County because we only have those two opportunities to pay bills. If you slow down the bill paying process, it, it will be very hard, especially on your small, local vendors.
Yeah, but we could get the line item transfers in there.
None of this is an emergency, and none of it's a surprise. There should be nothing in the consent agenda that is not well-known in advance. So, I don't understand why it's not being presented when that's what's required. Public disclosure, this is a public meeting. You're here because you're presenting to us, and we are reviewing what you're doing. So, what is in the consent agenda today, please?
What's in the consent agenda is what's listed here.
Uh, okay. Consideration and approval concerning budget interdepartmental line item transfers. Is that taxpayer money? How much taxpayer money is being spent today, is being transferred?
Well, I mean, and then we got property transfers. I mean, Sheriff's Office got two thousand and sixteen Tahoe with the transmission out that's going to the shooting range to get shot at.
So, you know all this?
Yeah.
But we don't know it. And we are the bosses on the order chart. Why can't we know it before you do it?
You know, this is just the way we've been doing things for a long time.
Things have not been done properly here since January of twenty fifteen.
Are you opposed to taking a Tahoe out to get shot up?
No, I'll go shoot it up myself. Tell me when. I'll be there.
Well, I mean-
We just wanna know what's in the consent agenda and how much of the tax-
Well, first of all, I'm gonna say for the record, that, this is done for the, in the name of, it's been done in the past in the name of efficiency, because sometimes there's stacks this big. At the end of the year, there used to be a lot of line item transfers and things moving around. None of it nefarious. So, that's the, the history of it. You know, I don't know from a flow point if there's a process that this can be done prior to. I mean, I know a lot of counties that don't even have attachments on their agenda. I'm not saying I aspire to be that, but our number one goal is to be compliant with the laws. That's, 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 that's it. And I believe, I would ask the county auditor and I would ask the county attorney if we are in sync with what the laws require.
But I guess, can we start putting this stuff on the agenda?
I'm waiting for an answer here. Do you feel like the way we're doing it meets the laws?
I'm, I'm sorry. I can't answer legal questions, only financial.
That's fine.
I don't think we're doing anything illegal, but I certainly do not see anything wrong at all with the public knowing exactly what they're gonna look at and with that in mind, it might be time for the Commissioners Court to consider not having the consent agenda at all and let things come up as they come.
Yeah.
And that way, the public will always see what, what it's about to be voted on. And it may slow down meetings quite a bit, but that's what the public needs to see, then that's what you ought to consider.
Well, and I would say this, like, on the department line item transfers. That's, that's interdepartmental. That's a transfer within a department. We can't vote against that, because that money is budgeted at the first of the year, and they can use it how they see fit. So, we don't, if he wants to move something from tires and tubes to gas and batteries or to operating equipment or paving material as an elected official, same thing with the district clerk. If you need to move something from one to another, we approve it at the first of the year. And that's your money to use throughout the year. So...
Is there not a way to, uh, present what has been submitted, uh, beforehand? And those that, and, and I'm, you know, I'm talking from the Sheriff's Office. Uh, if we get a line item transfer in last minute before the court, that we bring a copy to pro, to, to show. So, everything that is, uh, available to, to, uh,
By a date.
To provide by the date, the due date that, that goes out, is presented. And anything that's not provided, that is still gonna be considered, uh, have a copy, a copy for people to review at the, at the meeting.
Well, it's, it's part of the minutes. But, you know, once it's approved, it's part of the minutes.
But, but things get submitted through the meeting that also become part of the minutes.
Oh, yeah, like I said, I got some today that weren't even signed by the department heads. And that happens with the Sheriff's Office as well. And so, it's just a process. You're starting to get things ready for a court. There's, things have to happen by certain times, and I'm not involved with that process. So... Just, just a thought. Yeah.
But we can start putting this stuff, what we have by the agenda time, we can put on the agenda?
I don't, I'm not opposed to putting anything on the agenda. It's, I can tell you that it becomes an issue with Stephanie getting things late when she's trying to post it. And when you say you wanna attach it, it's not always just a quick and easy click of the button. Sometimes there's problems and it-
Oh, I get it.
It, it gets to be.
That's what I'm saying. As long as the people get it in time.
But there's always things that happen at the end.
The payment of bills, if you want that, um, it, it is, the payment of bills and the claims are emailed out to all of the Commissioners Court members, but they are not ready in time for the agenda posting. If we have to have those, if you want us to have the listing of bills ready for the agenda posting, you are gonna delay payment to vendors by approximately a week, which is, uh, that's, that's gonna be a major change for vendors that we deal with.
So, by having a deadline, we're only talking about one day, basically, but you're gonna say that's gonna delay a week? Cause three of our seventy-two hour notice days are the weekend.
Just as, as a taxpayer, we spend, we pay a lot of money. A voter, any interested person, do look that one up. We spend a lot of money in this county, running administration, running Commissioners Court, and running accounting and all these departments. I think that there's several million dollars being spent doing this. Why can we not figure out a way to make it happen? Other counties do it. Why is it that Burnet County can't do it?
Well, there's also other counties that don't do it. So, if we're gonna use other- Well, there's also other counties that don't do it, so if we're going to use other examples. I'm not saying one's right or wrong.
Other counties don't present their bills and stuff in Commissioners Court?
They don't have attachments to their agenda.
Right, but don't they have sequential items on their agenda that link to an attachment in their notice?
I'm just saying, there's other counties that do it different ways.
We could, I don't know why.
Our job is to try and stay compliant with the law. I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, we receive the line item transfers and the prepaid claims that could be emailed to the public as well. There's nothing to be hidden there.
Thank you.
Mr. Oakley, did you just say you're not opposed to putting things on the agenda? Did I hear that right?
That's correct.
Well, you are good at taking things off the agenda, though.
Right? My job is to stay compliant with state law. All right, so now, we have item twenty-four to consider. Is there any motions on item twenty-four?
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-five is calendar review. I would note for everybody, on Thursday at ten AM, I believe, let me verify that. On Thursday at ten AM, we will have a special meeting to canvass the election results. It'll happen at ten AM. We'll be in the little conference room outside the courtroom here. It's going to be tight. There will be no other business on the agenda. It's only to canvass the votes. We only need two members, I believe, to show, for canvassing votes. Obviously, it better to have, you know, everybody, but that's Thursday at eleven, ten, at the conference room. Had to go there because both courtrooms are being used.
This Thursday?
This Thursday. And that's posted.
Correct.
Correct. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on the twenty-sixth, November twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, are recognized holidays. And then in December, our regular, first regularly scheduled meeting will be on the tenth. The second regularly scheduled meeting, which would have been on the twenty-fourth, has been voted and moved to December the nineteenth. And that's all I'm showing for the next couple of months. Is there anything else coming up that needs?
So Thursday, the fourteenth, at five to seven, I would like to invite everybody to come to Bertram, to our new visitor center, as we cut the, we have our grand opening for our new visitor center that is located in the front of the Bertram Library. So we'll have some live music and some food and beverages and some fun stuff while we open the visitor center in Bertram, Thursday, the fourteenth.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir?
How do you address the burn ban? This is group, how do you address that?
The burn ban's on, we have a burn ban in place now.
Yes, sir.
Should there be a large rain occur, which we hope does happen countywide, then if it's close to a court date, like right before court date, then we can have it on the agenda as a court action to lift it. The state of Texas allows me to lift or in place the burn ban on in between court dates, and it has to be ratified by the next court date.
Try to clean up one moment, water, but we had some.
I'm sorry, sir.
On the water rain, we had some moisture last week for today.
Well.
Exactly. What we watch is the KBDI index. So I'm not sure where we're at today, around.
Six fifty-two yesterday.
Six fifty-two, so usually four hundred and above is when we start looking at it pretty hard, five hundred for sure, but we're in the extreme area right now of that index.
Yeah.
Pretty interesting. You can go on, I believe, Texas A&amp;M, KBDI index, and then you can follow it. That's the moisture content that is in the fuel, which is the grasses in the area. Very helpful.
It sounds like you're on a deep three, so.
Good question.
We get calls a lot when it rains at somebody's house, but it is countywide, so people are like, well, it rained in my house, but like.
And your regulations.
Yeah, good question, thank you. I'd love to be talking about taking the burn ban off. I'd love to be in a position about that. Okay, so that is everything on the agenda, except for item thirteen, I believe, which we will revisit on the next agenda, Stephanie. All right, anything else? All goods? Then we'll adjourn this meeting at ten thirty-five.